This meeting of the Margate Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
Attention salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Tom Collins.
Here.
Clem Wazleski. Mike Richmond. Jim Gallantino. Margaret Guber Nolte. Mike Cristaldi. Craig Pomisano. David Carter. Despina Hess. Remy Pelosi. Joe DiGirolamo. Rich Patterson.
This meeting is being held in accordance with due public notice thereof pursuant to the New Jersey State Sunshine Law. Notice that this meeting was advertised in the press and a copy of same has been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. All applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must come forward and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses. At the end of your case tonight, please see the board administrator to sign the two information sheets. Like to hear a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Like to make a motion for the approval of resolutions and decisions, number 45, 2016, Pariano Builders LLC, number 46, 2016, Bendel LLC, number 47, 2016, 9707 Amherst Marina LLC. Do I hear a motion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Before we start tonight, Stuart Weiser has a few words to say regarding the master plan. Try to keep it short, Stu.
I will, there's a game tonight. At the last meeting, we gave an update as to where we are with the master plan and related documents. We told you we'd be here every month to give you an update, so that's why I'm here. So, very quickly on the major components of the master plan, we had submitted a draft of the land use plan element for review and comment. We've gotten comments back from many people, but not all people. We are making our revisions to that document per the comments that we've gotten back. If anybody has additional comments or hasn't had a chance to provide their comments, we'd appreciate that feedback as soon as you can. We have just submitted the required statement of objectives, principles, assumptions, policies, and standards to the city for review. That's basically the philosophical underpinnings of what the master plan is all about, so we're hoping to get comments back from city officials and yourselves as soon as we can. We are proceeding with the sustainability plan, the community facilities plan, and the draft housing element. The last one is kind of tricky because as you may or may not know, the world of affordable housing in New Jersey and the world of COA have been turned upside down by the courts, and we are trying to figure out the best way to approach that topic, the affordable housing topic, to put the city in its best stead. And every time we go in a particular direction, we end up at the bottom of the rabbit hole and realizing there's no way out, so we're still working on that.
Stu, if that could potentially hold us up for years, is there any way to do everything else and leave that open?
The problem with that, Mr. Chairman, is that there are three mandatory elements to a master plan, the housing element being one of them, so that unfortunately is not one that we could punt to a later date. We're trying to work out how to get, what we need to get done, and if there are any components of that that we can put off to a later date, we're trying to work through those issues.
But if we don't know what the rules are yet, can't we just make our rules and then change them when they?
Wouldn't that just be a logical thing to do?
We're dealing with government.
Yeah. Frankly, I will tell you, that had always been my recommendation for the last 10 or 15 years since COA has had their rules adopted and then invalidated every week and a half, but the judges are coming back with a more stringent approach. And because of that, the last thing we want to do is make a recommendation that's going to get Margate jammed up, so we're really trying to look at that. We are well along the economic development plan element and hope to have something for you relatively soon. Same thing with the sustainability plan element. And the last piece of this is the ordinance revisions, and we are beginning to move along with them, but we really can't dive into that until you've adopted the land use plan element. So, we're going to hold off to the meat of that because we don't want to go down a direction we think that you're going to want to go and then find out no indeed for reasons that we're not aware of, but you don't want to go in that direction. So, in any event, that is all I have. I will be happy to answer any questions. If there are none, I would say happy holidays and go Eagles.
How do you want us to get back to you after we've reviewed some of this stuff?
The most expeditious way for you. If you're better just handwriting things, typing, if you want to give us a call, whatever's easiest for each individual is what we're going to facilitate.
Do you always want it in writing or do you want to sit down, talk about?
Why don't we start with an in writing, and if there's anything that we then don't understand or need further clarification, we can do it by phone or sit down, whichever.
Thank you.
But whatever's easiest for each individual board member.
Go Eagles. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the meeting schedule for 2017. What date's Thanksgiving next year?
Thursday.
Date, date.
This one is, whatever it is, that's not Thanksgiving.
The 23rd. 23rd, okay. I'd like to change the December one to 14th.
To what?
14th. So, it's on the 4th Thursday, not the last Thursday of each month, correct?
It's the last.
It's supposed to be.
4th Thursday.
Fourth.
No, it's the 4th Thursday.
The 4th.
Yeah. I just want to make sure we get that clear. Pinky? You had a comment on the calendar?
No, I did not.
Yes, you did. You want the meetings at 6:30?
Oh, I did ask you earlier if there was, if there was any way we could make the meetings earlier or does it interfere with everyone's schedule because they have been running late? We've had this whole cases every month. I don't foresee that getting any.
Right, so now's the time to discuss that. Does anybody have any comments on that or any questions?
Does anyone have any feelings towards that?
She wants to know if we could move the meetings to 6:30 instead of 7 o'clock because we've been so busy. If anybody has any problems with that, anybody have any problem getting here?
No.
Do you have any problem with that?
Anything of the big deal?
Huh? No. No, but now's the time to do it.
I have no problem with that.
John? Are you okay with that?
Rich, while people are thinking about that for December of 2017, the 21st is only the 3rd Thursday, the 28th is our 4th.
No, it's because of Christmas.
So, the 14th will be our 2nd, that's okay? 2nd Thursday?
Yes. Yeah, it was supposed to be the 15th this year, but there was a problem in the publications.
That's great.
It's too close to Christmas.
And that's only two weeks between meetings.
Alright, so we're going to change the, we'll change the meeting times till 6:30 and change that December to the 14th. Like to hear a motion to accept that schedule for next year?
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Once again, the 34 West Drive case has been pulled until a future meeting. Will notice be required?
Yes.
Notice will be required.
Noticed now, I believe I've noticed, this is Chris Ballinson for the applicant. I've noticed now twice, I believe. Chipped it just one time? Okay.
Yeah, he knows once.
Fair enough.
What was the, what's the delay for?
The reason for the adjournment is the number of voting members this evening. I'd like to maximize my chances and have seven members vote as opposed to six. Mr. Cristaldi told me he has to recuse himself. That leaves me with six, Mr. Chairman, and in light of the sentiment of the application, I understand there will be, there will be some votes probably not in my favor. I'd like to have a chance if we were a tie.
Remy Grossman usually shows up about 10 minutes late. Would you be willing? Nobody else is coming?
I'm just really looking out for my client to give them their best opportunity, that's all. There's no strategy, there's no strategy to it at all other than I'm trying to give my clients their best opportunity, that's all.
Mr. Ballinson, our, our January agenda is overflowing, so we do not have room in January. It would have to be February's meeting.
Hold on one second, thank you.
Well, we just approved February 23rd.
If we're going to be waiting that week, we'll do it in March.
March 30th.
March 30, and yes, can I collect the applications so we don't have to do that again? Is there a way that you and I could work that out or I'll take them tonight? The four members have them?
I have, I have it.
We, I don't want to hold the agenda up. We can talk about that at the end of the evening, I'll be here.
I will do my best to collect as much as I can.
I have Mr. Gibson who's here at the end of the agenda, maybe I can, I can help with that. Thank you very much, and I'm sorry for the time considerations.
Next case is John and Lauren Gibson, 13 North Benson Avenue, block 224.01, lot 79 in the S-25 district to grant a D variance for construction of a duplex in a single-family zone and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLarnan?
Roger D. McLarnan? Yes, I do. Thank you, Board Chairman and Board Members. Our report is dated December 19th, 2016 in regard to 12 North Benson Avenue. Some background, the applicant is seeking relief for their ordinances at the City of Margate in order to construct a new side-by-side two-family dwelling to replace an existing two-family dwelling that will exceed height. Now, it exceeds height and is a non-permitted use in the S-25 zone. The proposal includes parking below the structure, which will also include storage. The building will have a ground floor, storage and garage, and two habitable floors above. The location is at the east side of Benson Avenue midway between Vettner Avenue and Winchester Avenue. All other zoning requirements are being met. The report indicates all documents reviewed, the variances required are building height, which is a C variance, whereas 28 feet above BFE plus freeboard is required for new construction, and 30 feet is proposed. A use variance or a D variance, whereas single-family use is only permitted within the S-25 zone, and a two-family dwelling is proposed. No waivers have been requested. My comments are as. Yes.
Sorry. For the record, Tom Collins has to recuse himself for a D variance as representative of the mayor.
My comments are as follows. The extra foot of height appears to be driven by a desire to have garages and storage below the main structure. Existing grade appears to range between 4.57 and 5.63 feet. I request that please specify if any fill or excavation is proposed. The applicant has indicated all landscaping requirements will be met. Two driveways already exist at the site and two water driveways are proposed to access the street. The garages below the structure allow a developer to get rid of an existing detached garage as well as a shed allowing more open yard. The site is adjacent to zones which permit 30 feet in building heights. The site is also adjacent to zones which permit multifamily and two-family developments. The lot, if the density formula was applied for MF zones, would nearly allow for a three-unit structure with almost 2.95 units per unit area. The front facade may not clearly depict the elevator shaft and should be clarified as the visual impact may be changed. Applicants shall discuss how ownership of the site is proposed. Is it going to be condominiums, fee simple, or please explain. For variance relief and waiver relief, the following pertains. Recommendations, the variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy both the C1 and C2 criteria where appropriate, including positive and negative criteria components. For the D variance, he has special reasons and positive and negative criteria to be satisfied with consistencies with the city's master plan and zoning ordinances. The other comments are self-explanatory and I await the testimony of the applicant.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Ballinson, before you begin?
Yes, sir.
Is there an elevation? Is this all we have? For everybody? Elevations. Nobody has one. Well, you got it there, so. Okay, just so you know, Eric Goldstein, we're going to have a vote after this meeting on new business, that if there's not an elevation with the plans, they won't be accepted.
That's understood, that's, I, the elevation, I have the elevations, and if they didn't get you, that's my fault.
That's okay, but we, there's other ones that don't have it, so I'm just letting that be known, we're going to vote on that tonight, so you're aware of it.
Thank you, Board Members, Chris Ballinson for the Gibsons. John Gibson is here tonight for the property that has been his family since the 1950s, happens to be his family in the 1970s, and his father. So, we'll do much of the property. John now seeks to replace that 60-year-old structure with a new two-family dwelling for his family. John can talk to you about how to use the property and what the intended property is. So, what is proposed is a replacement of the existing duplex with a duplex that will meet the new FEMA requirement and be consistent involving the current construction codes and standards. Property, if we were in a multifamily, less than 100 square feet or three units, John's only proposing two units, that's his there now. We leave ample green space, ample living space, ample light there in that zone. No additional accessory structure is proposed. What is, what is, we can see from the plant, it's an empty garage and the existing shed or being eliminated from the plant. All setbacks met, coverage is met, we are asking for the additional complete height which we believe will only, will accept as part of the master plan at 30 feet rather than 28. And just for the board's application that they are aware of the adjacent multifamily zone one block over, the height as we propose is permitted. John Nathan, the owner, is also an architect, and he's going to testify, justify the variance and give a little background about the family and the proposed used property.
Alright, Chris, before you start with that, you mentioned that you're going to 30 feet, we're keeping it because it's anticipated it will change. The roof pitch is also anticipated to change, so you have to address that issue. Not the new one, the new one's going to be the same, same sidewall, so if you want to go higher, the middle can go higher, the walls can't go higher.
John, you want to come over here and use the microphone? John, if you would.
My name is John Gibson. I am the owner of this property on 13 North Benson. I'm a registered architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing a lot of years since the mid-'70s. I got my license in New Jersey. I'm here tonight because in 1947, my grandfather and my grandmother bought these two lots on Benson Avenue, and about a year later, my father and my grandfather built a house of which my parents, grandparents would come down in the summer and they loved it. Well, my grandfather passed away and my mother inherited the property, and around the '70s, my father put a second floor on top of the existing first floor, and that's been in operation since the '70s. My purpose here is that I am getting up in age, I have two children, that I would love to be able to continue the ownership of this property within my daughter and my son. Now, if you're familiar with Benson, we have waterfront property there when it rains, so the water does come up a little bit over the curb, and the elevation of the floor, I'm going to say is a foot from the street. So, you step up into it, and if you walk through the house, you're at grade in the back. Now, it's made of cinder block, exterior walls, bearing walls, cinder blocks. The house is just antiquated. Now, every time you hear a weather report, you don't know if the storm's going to the right or it's going to the left, and we did have about a foot and a half of water into the property with sanding. So, what my intentions were, and we do have a very big lot, it's 60 feet by 108 feet, and all I wanted to do was to be able to remove that house and build a new side-by-side house where I could give one to my daughter and one to my son when it becomes time to move on. I, we're not asking for any variances except when the place, when the house was built, I believe the zoning permitted a duplex, and I think it was changed over the years. So, now we're into a different zone. I would also need to get about two feet more over the height, only because with 13 feet, I need eight feet for the entrance level, which I'm coming in the side of the house, and eight, 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 foot for the dimension of the thickness of the floors, and with a 512 pitch, I just squeak out 30 feet.
John, if I may?
Go ahead.
You have, you have eight feet of storage garage ceiling height?
More than that.
Uh, how much, how much more?
Uh, I'm going to say another five, six feet. It's huge inside of the garage only because I have to come up to 13, and the garage is on grade level. So, between the grade and the 13, and then to the top of the garage, I may have 13 feet.
Oh, total, total.
Total inside, and that's only because I'm trying to maintain the 13 feet for the entrance into the house.
You want your, you want your first floor at that elevation?
Yeah, it's really only an entrance way with a set of stairs that take me up to the second floor.
And that's your required first floor nonetheless?
Yes.
I'm sorry, and that's the required first floor nonetheless? And then your, your first floor of living space is eight, eight feet to the ceiling height?
Yeah, the best I can do would be eight, eight foot for the, the dimension of the floor and eight, and then I'm just squeaking out 30 feet.
Yeah, you lost me. If the first floor is at 13, which is where it has to be, is that correct?
That's an entrance level into the house.
It is? Why can't that be the ceiling of the garage at 13 feet and the floor of the house?
Well, we're going to come up the sides, I'm going to go up into a, maybe a plant. Yeah, I'll show you. Let me show you the plan.
That's 13. What's 13?
No, but he wants to create an interior space.
I think grade, grade's like seven, seven.
Yeah, the grade is around five, 5.7 feet, it's very low. So, again, this entrance is, you'll go into the house, you'll go up a set of steps to the second floor.
So, the first floor is not at 13? So, your first floor is not at 13 feet?
That's the entrance. Then the second floor is up another eight feet, and then the third floor is.
What's the garage entrance as a floor, as a whole floor?
They would turn the floor, could I turn the plan around, sir?
He's saying the first floor is above 13. What's on the first floor? What you're calling the first floor?
The first floor is a set of stairs into a foyer, and then another set of stairs that goes up to the first and the second floor, which is the living area.
Chris? So, your first floor consists of steps, there's no living area in the first floor?
Well, I think he's just calling.
Chris, I don't think that entrance has to be at 13.
The, yeah, the first, the first floor, the entrance has to be at 13, no?
I don't think the entrance does.
No, the first floor, living area has to be at 13.
Well, it's well, it's well above that.
Well, that's my question, why you need 30 feet if you've got 30 feet for a two-story house? I don't understand that. So, your first floor is way above 13? No.
If I were to lower that?
You can lower that.
That would help me.
What is your proposed first floor elevation? Well, he's calling the landing as first.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You're calling the landing first floor?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you bring your forgeries down, you're done with that one.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank, thank you.
That was my point.
I was standing here looking at it.
Give it us some steps.
Yeah, like two, like two sets. John, John, it looks like based on the discussion we just had, not to hold anybody up, we can eliminate the height variance and drop at least two feet.
Yes.
Moving on from there.
Thank you.
Thank you. John, otherwise, for the zone, for the S-25 zone or for the MF zone, the building meets all of the zoning criteria, you mean the single-family zone and multifamily zone?
Yes. I've exceeded in some cases what would be required. For example, the landscaping is more than what is required, the coverage is, you know, the, the less than what I need. I, I met every criteria on that zone.
I, I, I don't have a plot to add, I can rely on Roger's comments in terms of justification. I can put on the record, if you would like, a little bit of additional testimony for justification. But I, I think it speaks for itself, I think what you've seen is that it's a very modest duplex, in light of the size of the lot, that it, there is ample light air and open space provided because of the additional open space within the yard areas, both front, rear, and sides.
And your plans are to keep it in the family with one son owning one and one daughter owning the other, that's what your plans are here?
Chris?
Yes?
I don't, I haven't seen an undue hardship here. I don't see a hardship to put a two-family dwelling there. I know he's an architect, have we looked at building one nice, big, single-family home?
I was just gonna get to that. If we were to build a single-family home under the S25 zoning criteria, we could have two 8-foot sideyard setbacks, we could have two and a half stories, and we could have a substantially smaller front yard and rear yard. In other words, we could build a single-family home much larger than this duplex. Uh, and I think, in, in light of the way, the current way it's gonna be used, I think you'd probably have a less intense use, as a seasonal use, than a 5,000-square-foot single-family home in a neighborhood that doesn't necessarily accommodate 5,000-square-foot, uh, single-family homes. Uh, on the flip side, you've got a property that is easily two single-family home lots. Easily two single-family home lots, and I think you'd rather see a single structure there than two. Now, I know I don't have frontage, I don't have frontage for, I don't have frontage for two single-family homes, but there are creative ways to do that, and I think I was here last month, with the screwy driveway configuration that led to a house in the back of the lot similar to this. But I, I, I think hardship isn't what we're here to talk about, what we're here to talk about is the flexible C variance.
But it's a D variance.
I understand that, it doesn't mean it's a hardship, it's still the flexible standard. Flexible standard is, does the positive outweigh the negative? And I think merely the positive of bringing the property into conformance with FEMA regulations and criteria is, is a benefit that would carry the, carry the burden all by itself. I can ask John, John, as an architect, do you think that the property can accommodate the duplex use even though it's not permitted? That, that's the, the special criteria, the special question you ask for the D variance. John, do you think the property, the size of the property, the location of the property, can accommodate the duplex?
Easily.
And why do you say?
Easily. With a lot of 60 feet wide and it's 108 feet deep, I don't know if, I think on that block, there's only two other properties that are that big, every other one is not as deep or not as wide. These were at one time two 30-foot wide lots that were combined into one lot.
And John, the location of the property, even though duplex is not permitted here, I believe if you go a block to the north, which is toward Amherst Avenue, and a block to the west, which is toward Longport, duplexes are permitted, is that right?
Everywhere around us, there's multi-family houses.
On that block, are there any multi-family homes?
Uh, I think there may be one, I'm not sure, but I.
On that side of the block, on the other side of the street, there are.
On the, in the multi-family zone?
That's right. I think what you're suggesting is that you'd like to see this duplex be eliminated in favor of a single-family home in the 6,000-square-foot lot.
I'm having a difficult time compromising the S25 zone, we created it for a reason. I don't see a hardship. I, okay.
Not general to hardship.
Okay, so if I have to look at the general welfare and the flow of traffic?
Positive criteria for the.
I'm having a difficult time with it.
I would suggest that merely bringing a property into compliance with applicable ordinances, statutes, and construction code beats the purpose of land use. It beats the positive criteria in and of itself.
I mean, I could.
Aside from the provision of light air and open space, in that we are, we have excess landscaping, we're under coverage, and we are well within the setback criteria.
Do you know who owns the lot, there's a lot next door that looks very large?
Now, that's, that was two lots, and those people built on one lot, and that, that's just an empty lot.
But it looks like you could probably build a single-family.
I'm not sure that the house that they built doesn't go into more than the 30 feet. So they would have less than 30 feet to build on it.
My concern is that the, the lot next door and that building decide, we, we want a multi-family. Two, because you just approved two families next door. That's my, you know, that's.
Well, they have to tear down the house that's there.
Right, and I like that it's flood compliant, and it's a nice project, but if we pass one, do we have to pass two, the guy next door and next door to that?
The precedent is not what carries the day.
The precedent is not what the board is supposed to look at, it's supposed to look at each application. And I think when you look at a project that by no way maximizes program, by no way maximizes program. John's not looking for two huge duplex units, they're both very modest, combining as a family. By fact, I think it's a real, real good plan, I wouldn't know now if bringing D variance for a duplex in a single-family zone.
And there are two existing units there now, correct?
There are.
Yes.
And, and when I, when I laid this out, listen, the neighbors that we've had there have been there almost as long as we are, we get along with them, we care about them. That's why I tried to keep it as narrow as I could, so there would be side yards, backyards. We're tearing down an old garage that's been there for, I really, I'm really gonna miss the garage, 'cause I used to go in there a lot, but we're tearing that down, um, yeah, I was sensitive, we're not gonna change any of the grades near the property lines.
Roger, you had asked about the front elevation, I think you see the front elevation detail here, John added, um, an element to break it up a little bit, but if you look at the side elevation, you'll see there is a bump out in the center, that's, that's the elevator shaft, elevator tower here.
Yeah, I saw that on the side, on the, on the side elevation, but my concern is in the front elevation, the top of the shaft, does it stop at the, usually protrudes above the ceiling line, correct?
I think, but I think with, with the additional height, that grade, all that space, I think you're able to drop it. So you don't, you don't need it at the top, you need it at the bottom. If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, yes.
Typically with the elevator, you need to come beyond the roof line.
Yes.
But you, you don't show that in this instance, why is that?
Um, I don't know. I mean, I was trying to, well, I will be a little bit above, and if I had to, I would have flattened this out, but see, again, with the 30 feet, the 512 dictated a lot of things. So if I can drop this, I could get 612, I could get a higher roof, I could accommodate that.
Under any circumstances, you're not gonna need to go above 28 feet from your first floor for an elevator tower?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, you understand, if you do, you need to come back here, you with me?
I won't. Yeah, I, I think there's some leverage on, on allowing the elevator shaft to go higher, that, that's not the issue. I just, it didn't look like the elevator shaft is shown in the front facade. And my concern was, if you actually build it, it's not gonna look like that, and the board and the city doesn't want to, to look at an elevator shaft from the street.
Understood, Nick.
Well, the elevator shaft was hidden in the facade, so, yeah, we will have to do a little bit of modification up there. When I read the comments, I wasn't sure if you were talking about, you know, jazz.
My concern is, when you build it, it's not gonna look like that, and.
I don't understand, I don't understand why I'm missing that, it's gonna be.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a little bit higher, and you got a big blank space there in the middle of, of the building.
As opposed to what? That's what I'm asking, as opposed to what? You want it to look, you want it to look like something different?
Not an elevator.
Well, we can, we can maybe to.
Dress it up somehow.
We can leave line across, we can dress that up and make it look less like a blank.
Right.
Shaft?
Hey, Roger.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't look like that, because he's saying it's gonna go over the roof line, so it's gonna stick up, you're not gonna have those roofs coming down like this.
Yeah, and this whole building is gonna come down. Because this, this entrance is coming down.
I, I think what Roger's saying, he doesn't want to see 25 feet of sheer vertical wall, flat vertical wall, you'd like to see that, right?
Correct.
Let me tell, I was toying with that, I really don't know what to do on this, but I do, I do want it, I did want to jazz that up a little bit to reflect, you know, a little difference in the elevation.
Well, we're gonna make that a condition, no subject to his approval?
Yeah, we'll do, I believe you, I, I wanted to do that.
I know, so that's, we'll make it a condition, you have no problem with it?
No problem at all.
Roger, if they put one service in there with one meter and one water service, and call this a single-family home.
It's got two, it's got two kitchens, you can't do that.
You don't have two kitchens.
I'm, right now, I'm paying two water services, right now, okay, so.
I mean, you guys, see, there's nobody in there right now, it's not ready to make.
Will they be condo-ed out, will they be a master?
Well, what I'm gonna have to do is, I was talking with Chris to condo them, so that one, my daughter gets one, and my son gets one. And the only thing they're gonna have to fight about is who's cutting the grass, but besides that, that'll be.
That's what you're, you're still gonna cut the grass.
But, uh, that was the reason I did the two by two.
Okay, Clem?
John, the plan I have, I don't know whether it's been up there, shows a stairway going up from the second floor. First? You're, there was a third floor up there?
Yeah, there is, let me see, what I considered the first floor was this with the little foyer.
No, no, no.
Then it goes to the second floor, then to the third floor, yeah.
But it's really only two floors, what he's calling second floor is.
Yeah, I.
So he, he was calling the entrance area.
Okay, I, I get it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I called that the first floor.
So above your top floor, there's no stairway going up into the attic space?
No, not with a, the small roofs like that, you're not gonna get very much.
Just to be clear, any other questions or comments from the board? You're done, Chris?
I have, Rich, I have one comment, if it's condo-ed out, couldn't they, couldn't one of the children sell one of the condos and or both of them could sell the condos off and, you know, I mean, then you could, then you could have a.
I could do, listen, you know.
Do that now.
Today, how can you control, I've been married 38 years, who knows?
It's been, it's been a family duplex, and that's why it's, it's, it's allowed right now, because it's been in a family for so long.
No, I understand correctly, it's all itself.
I could do a, a top and bottom.
Which would just be condo, as is, doesn't have to be raised, condo as is sold, he should, for the whole of that here. That, that, that's what I say forever, that, this man, that is.
It won't flood, that's one thing. Anything else? Clem, you wanna turn that off? Clem? Mike? Anyone here for the public, like to comment? Public portion disclosed, any other questions or comments from the board? Can you read the motion with the conditions?
Uh, the applicant is withdrawing the C variance for heights, he's gonna move the building down, so this is just an application, not just, but it's for D variance. Uh, the permitted use is single fam- family, hit the proposals for duplex use. Mr. McLaren put in his report the, the requirements, there is a, either a hardship requirement or to promote the general welfare requirement, um, and there's some other, um, criteria also that we could go through, but those are the two that really are gonna come to the effect on this. The conditions are that, um, all the, um, recommendations that are placed in our board planner's report, as well as the area where the elevator shaft, um, shall be placed, shall be improved on the exterior, um, in a way that is approved by our board planner. So essentially, this is just a vote for a D variance at this point.
I hear that motion.
What conditions?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Need five affirmative votes.
Clem Waslaski?
Ordinarily, I would not be for duplex here, except for two things. First of all, it is already a duplex, so we're not adding one, we're just replacing one. And, well, actually, three things, certainly if Jimmy was here, he would be all in favor of it, because anything that gets a building out of the flood problem, he's all for. And the fact that all the setbacks.
Clem, can you move your hands?
All the setbacks are greater than what is required. So it's giving considerable open space around it, which is a rarity in town. So I will vote to approve.
Margaret Gubernalti?
I've struggled with this one, because we are in an S25 zone, and when you tear down the existing property, you've given away the duplex that you have, and it's now, you know, so I have a problem with that. Tear it down, it's gone. There is no undue hardship, I understand. The only way I'm approving this is because it promotes the general welfare, only in that it is flood compliant. With trepidation, I will approve the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
I see nothing wrong with replacing it from a duplex to a duplex, flood compliant. You got about yes?
Craig Mamasana?
I, I agree with Clem's assessment of it, um, it's been a duplex forever, and it is gonna be an improved duplex. With the FEMA regulations, uh, it'll be compliant, and the setbacks have been improved on it, so I approve it.
Desperahes?
Just pointing to the justifications, I as well do not see a undue hardship as to that level. You know, plenty of families are able to share, shared living space for a home, however, uh, looking at the carrying out a purpose of zoning, applying those standards, as the general welfare, I do believe that flood compliant home, where no neighbor opposition, uh, was stated today at the meeting, as to the safety and free flow of traffic, I don't believe that, given the fact that a current duplex exists in the location, and a new updated duplex will be replacing it, I don't believe it'll affect in any new change, the free flow of traffic, it will remain as it's been for decades. Um, promotion of the appropriate population densities and concentrations, again, we're remaining in a duplex to a duplex, it'll simply be upgraded, possibly with better free flow of traffic, going back to that, 'cause now we have the dual garages. And given the fact that it has been here for decades, the neighbors that have been in the area, moved into the area, they've been aware of the fact that there are two homes there, so the two homes will continue to be there as they have been. Designable visual, visual environment, it is being upgraded, it's a nice project, I like that the side of the home, we didn't really talk about it as to this project we have in the past, it's nice that they've maintained a a nicer facade on the side, 'cause you're gonna see that big wall, it does have some nice visual aspects to it for the side view, um, again, we didn't mention it specifically here, but we talk about it quite a bit. Roger's recommendations that should be a part of it, we didn't specifically say it, but I'd like, yeah, I'd like to see the the owner put in that planting strip in the trees, I think that'll add to the visual aspects and kind of break up that height. It is a big positive factor that the owner was able to bring the home down, 'cause that in combination with the duplex would have been too much for myself. So given all those reasons, I will vote in favor of the application.
Rich Patterson?
What she said.
Next case is Deborah Katz, 14 North Pembroke Avenue, block 217, lot 11, in the S40 district to grant C variances for a side yard and combined side yard setback to construct a second floor addition and deck and possibly others. Taxes and water are current and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members, my report is dated December 19th, 2016. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the City of Margate in order to construct a second floor addition, including a deck. A portion of the addition is within the required minimum setback for the. A portion of the addition is within the required minimum setback for the side yard, and it will encroach five point one feet. The addition will be above an existing first floor and triggers a variance for combined side yard setbacks. The adjacent principal building is more than ten feet away from the ocean, from the encroachment, that is not a factor now. The front yard is currently landscaped, no street trees are present, the proposed deck will cover an existing compliant porch. The structure sits below current base line plus three boards. Page three indicates documents reviewed to generate this report, the variances required are as follows: side yard setback, the minimum, whereas eight feet is required, and two point nine feet is proposed, and existing, expansion of non-conformity. Combined side yard setback, the minimum, whereas nineteen point six feet is required and fifteen point three feet is proposed, it's also existing, it's not being expanded. The waivers have been requested, my comments are as follows: setback already exists, and a portion of the expansion could be considered minor. However, the applicant shall be required to testify as to why the addition cannot comply with the ordinance. There are not any street trees present, and I recommend that street trees ought to be a condition of approval if, if granted. Recommendations, the variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy both the C one and C two criteria where appropriate, including negative and positive criteria. If the board finds that the testimony provided provides evidence that supports the variances, then I would recommend that the below recommendations and everything in my report be addressed in a condition of approval. I have no further comments.
Thank you, Mr. McLaren. Good evening, Eric Olson, on behalf of the applicant, Deborah Katz, she's here with me this evening along with Peter Weiss. Unless the board anticipates hearing testimony from Mrs. Katz, just Mr. Weiss will testify, so I'd like to have him come up and be sworn. Prior to Mr. Weiss being sworn, however, I do wanna point out, uh, Mr. McLaren's report is accurate, but there's a couple of things that I think are very important to note prior to hearing the application. All of the other setbacks are greatly in excess than what is required under the zone for fourteen North Pembroke. Most importantly, she has four parking spaces where three are required, the building height is much lower than it could be, landscaped area is greatly in excess of what's required, and building coverage is greatly less than what could be built. I find these variances that Peter is gonna describe in a second to be dominionist, and the only reason we need them is because we can't enlarge the yard, and we're not gonna move the house over to the center of the lot. So having said that, Mr. Weiss, if you don't mind being sworn, please, then we'll go to your testimony.
Take your name to the record.
Peter Weiss?
The motion.
Mr. Weiss testified before this board on numerous occasions, and you're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Correct.
Unless the board would like us to have Mr. Weiss's correct credentials.
Please.
You accept Mr. Weiss's expert testimony, you walk us through the plan of what's being proposed, and the two variances, being side yard setback and combined side yard setback for the expansion of the deck and the additions.
And let me go back a, a year or two ago, I've been working with the Katz's for a while, um, so I did a couple of little, a couple of other small projects for them, and a year or so ago, we actually had a conversation about adding a third floor, and we actually drew up plans to do that. But then the Katz's decided, well, we don't really need that much room, we'd rather just do a small addition on the second floor, our family's growing, but, you know, we don't really need that much space, this one bedroom that was right here was really kind of tiny and useless, so by just bumping out the front of the building a few feet, we gain a, we effectively gain a bedroom, and, you know, enlarges the other couple rooms. So that's how we got here. Um, so ultimately, what we're proposing to do is, as I mentioned, expand the, the second floor towards the street, a little more than four feet. And they also wanted to modernize or change the front of the building, so to that extent, we're gonna move the little bit of brick that's there, and ultimately, what we're trying to do is just move out the second floor to be, um, in line with the den on the first floor, so this will then line up vertically, and the second floor will go straight across, and we're changing the roof line. In order to do that, we need to, um, build out the right corner of the house here, which then necessitates the variance, so that kind of plays more into the aesthetics of the project than just trying to gain another twenty-two square feet, 'cause that's not really, um, the aim, it was more to modify the front of the building and make it more, um, in line with what the Katz's wanted. So that's, that's how we got here.
Mr. Weiss, you're a professional figure as an architect, do you see any detriment associated with the variances that we're requesting to see?
No. I mean, ultimately, yes, we're close to the side yard here, but we're still seventeen and a half feet or so away from the neighboring building, so, I mean, that's still, considering if this was compliant, and we had eight feet, and they were compliant, they'd have eight feet, you know, that'd be sixteen, so we're in excess of what, um, the board, or the, uh, the ordinance basically contemplates for side yard setbacks.
Is that a new house on that side, is it an old house, is it the neighbor's?
Uh, this, this house is certainly not new.
Huh?
It's not new, no, not by any stretch, it's, um, forty, fifty years old, probably. This house, I imagine, was built in the seventies, I guess, six.
Is that not the same?
Yeah, probably.
Peter, that looks like you have fifteen feet.
Doesn't it, isn't it fifteen feet?
That's back here, this, this building sort of undulates a little bit.
Fifteen, sixteen, I should think, fifteen, sixteen.
Yeah, but that's here. This building jogs in a couple feet towards the street. I've got some pictures I can, yes, I have too. In addition, this, this portion of this building is one-story, and there's no windows along this side, so it's not really impacting this building, or, you know, the neighbor in any way.
Pete, we talked about the negative criteria, so if there was, in your opinion, does the variance request add, and, or, satisfy the positive criteria of the municipal areas?
Yes.
Provide decorative architectural elements, provide good planning, putting in the city of Margate, uh, double-lane, kind of, design, beautiful, whatever.
Yes.
Unless the board has questions, please.
If this, if this house was, a new house, would it need to be elevated, or is this a, is the first floor okay?
First floor below would be elevated.
Are we approaching fifty percent of the cost, or is there no problem that way? Have, I mean, has that been looked into?
It has been.
Has that been discussed with Jimmy Gallantino?
Um, I don't know if he discussed it directly, Jim, but you've got an idea of what the renovations cost, it's well below.
What would that be?
Around sixty, right?
Sixty?
Yeah.
And what's the house on the rolls at?
One fifty, right?
Okay. Okay. Any other questions from the board? Anyone here for the public like to comment or question? Public portion is closed. Stan, will you read the motion?
Uh, the, um, applicants requesting C variance relief for, um, side yard setback and combined side setback, sorry, didn't have my microphone on, um, these are, these are already existing, um, because of the expansion, it requires, uh, variance relief. Um, the conditions, I didn't hear any specific conditions, but I'm assuming there's gonna be conditions that, um, are set forth in our board planner's report.
Trees, street trees.
Which include street trees?
Sure.
And we discussed that earlier. Okay, so there's two, all right. Anything else, Roger, that you see as a condition of the, in your report, that's not?
No, no, well, the plans, the new plans.
Yeah, all right. Okay, so with that being said, with those, uh, those variances, with those conditions, we would need a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, second.
Clem Wasleski?
Total twenty-two square foot addition on here is so minor, and there are a number of existing factors where the, uh, have not come anywhere as up near the minimums for our ordinance. I see no problem with this, I vote yes.
Tom Collins?
I actually agree with Clem, um, I would much rather see a project like this than a tear-down in a three-story monster gym in the neighborhood that just is out of character, this is a really nice aesthetic neighborhood for Margate, I think the property and what you're gonna do is really in keeping with what we're looking for in Margate, it's gonna be nice for you, it's gonna be nice for Margate, so I vote in favor of it.
Margaret Cooper Nolte?
I agree with Mr. Wasleski and Mr. Collins as well, um, certainly the positives outweigh the negatives, it's an improvement to the property, it is a beautiful street, a beautiful neighborhood, um, I vote in favor of the application.
Mike Cristaldi?
I live on Pembroke, if they tear any more houses down in my neighborhood, I won't find my way home. I'm just, I'm happy to see somebody keeping a little bit of Margate still here, you know, we're, we're just starting to get out of control, so I'd definitely vote yes for it, good luck with it.
Craig Pomisana?
Uh, I'd also vote for the project, uh, five, five foot by four foot, uh, twenty square foot, very minimus, and it's pre-existing on that side of the house, and, um, it's a nice improvement to the neighborhood.
Desperahess?
I also vote in favor of the application for all the reasons previously stated.
Rich Patterson?
I agree with what Mr. Collins and Mr., uh, what's your name? Cristaldi said, so I vote yes.
Application passes seven to nothing.
Thank you. Next case is FCF Associates, seven South Essex Avenue, block one oh five, lot seven, in the CBD district, to grant C variances for parking, building coverage, and possibly others. Taxes and water are current, and proof of advertising and notifying is satisfied. To the record, Mr. Collins is recusing himself from this case. Mr. McLaren?
Thank you, Board Chairman, Board Members, my report is dated December twentieth, two thousand and sixteen. Background, the applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct an addition to a previously approved site containing a true value hardware store and associated parking. The increase in floor area prompts a variance for additional parking as well as building coverage. The designated schedule is attached in my report, and you can see how it complies or doesn't comply. Also, the documents reviewed are listed in my report. The variances required are as follows: principal building coverage, in this zone, sixty feet is the maximum allowed, and sixty-three point one percent is proposed. Parking, whereas one space is required for every two hundred square feet of building area, and no additional parking is being proposed, a variance was previously granted for parking on this site. No waivers have been requested, the site is adjacent to a recently approved use variance to construct a residential, to construct residential units. The site is nearly one hundred percent imperious, consideration should be given to recharge, some of the roof runoff being generated, not a requirement. The applicant shall provide testimony as to where the AC units will be relocated. All mechanic equipment will need to meet minimum setback requirements, street opening permits may be required, verification at all license agreements with the city are up to date is required. Recommendations: the variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy the C one and C two criteria where appropriate, but for both negative and positive criteria. If the board finds that the testimony provided provides evidence that supports the variances, then I would recommend below recommendations, if not already done, be a condition of approval or listed below. One of the conditions that I recommend is that Douglas Avenue frontage shall be landscaped with shade-tombed species. And that concludes my report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Michael Lern, Law Firm of Callahan-Thompson, appearing on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Chairman, um, before I introduce the application and my witness, Mr. Michael Collins, just bookkeeping, I have some green receipt cards, which I would give them as casey, and I also have some photographs, photographic exhibits, which we are gonna use during the course of the hearing, we have them mounted on a board, I'm gonna mark that, but I have individual copies for each of the board members, if you'd like to pass these around.
Mr. Birdman, I trust that the site plan need not be marked as a separate exhibit since it's part of the application.
That's fine.
And I trust all jurisdictional requirements of it.
Yes, we can do that, um, that doesn't need to be marked, it's part of the packet, but I'm gonna mark these photographs A one.
I'm gonna, yes.
Okay? Oh, you're in.
I have it mounted, we're gonna, you mark this as A one.
Yes, sir.
Which is identical series of six photographs.
Okay.
I know the board's well familiar with the site in question, what we're looking for tonight is basically an amendment of previously granted site plan relief, which the board had, uh, considered some years ago, and as noted in Mr. McLaren's report, the proposed addition or modification to the existing structure basically encompasses enclosing an existing area of the site, which is presently used for the ongoing business operation of the site. This is to the, uh, generically say to the east side of the building, actually, it's the south side of the building, on the Atlantic side of the building, it is currently used for parking of a business, a heavy-duty business truck, and storage on the out, of outdoor materials, basically summer-type materials, landscaping materials, et cetera, and the, is also where the existing air conditioning units for the site are. Again, as the board is well aware, this is a totally commercial zone, the existing structure as it is presently configured complies with all the existing bulk requirements of the zone, with one exception, which is the parking requirements, and that had previously been addressed and granted a variance relief, uh, by the board's previous action. As noted in Mr. McLaren's report, we trigger a coverage variance of three point one feet, a percentage, uh, three point one percent, above the permitted coverage of the, of the, in the zone of sixty percent, we're proposing to go to sixty-three point one percent, and he also notes for the record, a parking variance, but as I'm, as will be shown by the plans and by the testimony, we're not reducing any existing parking, the parking will remain the same as it presently exists, and the proposed enclosure of this area will still remain as parking and storage, so we're not increasing the floor plan of the building, which, uh, for the members of the general public, which might increase theoretically your need for additional parking. Now, what also triggered, what really triggered is, Mr. Michael Collins will testify, who's our principal witness tonight, the board recently granted variance relief to the, on the Douglas Side Avenue side of the property for existing commercial buildings, which were there, and is now, my understanding, residential, is going in there. Two, on the Essex side of the avenue, there is an old, it's been there as long as I can remember, existing motel, uh, which is, my understanding, is now in operation, but for, for basically what I would describe as transient type of, of occupants. So we have residential non-conforming on that side, of course, one's a pre-existing non-conforming use, the other's a non-conformity granted by this board's various relief. The applicant has had, been experiencing a variety of problems, one, uh, maintaining the parking of the truck at that site, and two, they're getting concerned that now there's no longer an existing structure, commercial structure, would have all, all that area which has been previously used for, uh, storage of commercial, uh, materials is now open, so they want to enclose that, and we're gonna respectfully suggest to the board that we have to balance the pros and cons on this. We're asking for variance relief, what it really boils down to is three point one percent coverage above existing. The benefits that are gonna be derived, and is our position, is one, buffering the existing and to be installed commercial from what was previously, excuse me, residential, was from what was previously commercial with, um, so that the existing trucks, air conditioning units, and storage of materials is no longer gonna be exposed to the public, it's gonna enhance the safety and security to the applicants themselves for usage of that site, and, and... Mr. McLaren did note in his report landscaping proposals. The previously site plan approvals had a row of RV vibes there, which is, my understanding, did quite well. Pre-Sandy, Sandy eliminated them. We are going to replant those plantings or any landscaping which is consistent with the approvals previously granted to the Board for the new residential construction. I don't know if it was RV vibes or whatever, but we are waiting to hear your input on that. But that's, the Douglas Avenue side will be landscaped, with the exception, as you noticed, there's a notch in the proposed, and when I say a notch, the construction doesn't go all the way out to Douglas Avenue. There's an area there, it's concrete, and you have an exit door, et cetera, but there will be landscaping proposed.
Are they starting construction on that project soon?
It aren't.
You can't answer.
The, on the Douglas Avenue residential, I know the building went down in a minute and a half. I mean, I was amazed.
Well, can you swear them in so they can answer the question? Can you swear them in so they can answer the question?
Yes. Mr. Michael Collins is my witness.
Why don't you both get sworn in?
Michael Collins?
Do you know when the construction's going to start there?
They're almost complete with demolition, and we're going right into the truck.
Okay. So then, so you'll know at some point within the next six months of what the landscaping will be, and you can match that landscaping for your building? Okay. I just wanted that on the record, that that started, and you can match that. We don't have to tell you what to put in. We'll agree that you matched something of what they have. Mr. Collins?
Michael.
Just for, again, for the record, state your full name and your business address, please.
So, Michael Collins, 7 South Essex Avenue.
And how are you affiliated with the applicant's, the partnership which owns and operates this building?
I am one of the owners and also general manager of the business.
Could you describe just very briefly what's presently on-site, the hours of operation, the nature of the operation, and how you're familiar with it?
Sure. So currently, I mean, if we have a hardware store, the area in question today is the south side of the building. We have an alley there that we use for, for storage of our vehicles, stock goods and other materials. The Essex Avenue portion of it is where, where we house our two commercial vehicles. And then, the Douglas Avenue side, we have air conditioning units elevated above, and we use underneath for additional storage.
Now, in anticipation of the hearing tonight, you have a series of photographs taken.
Yes, last week, these photographs were taken under my supervision. They started the demolition of the, the property on Douglas Avenue, adjacent to, to our building, and we wanted to take these to show what it looks like, you know, now that we don't have a, a business blocking that view. We, previously, there was a commercial business right up to the property line. Our air conditioning units and storage were essentially enclosed in an alley, which is no longer present.
And for purposes of the record, Mr. Bergman, I'm going to refer to this exhibit as A1.
That's fine. All right?
Michael, and obviously, the, the top photo and the first photo and the series of photos that have been taken, that's the front elevation of the building showing the parking.
Yes.
With the, and the, what would be, this would be, the land avenue side.
Correct.
There's an open parking area right there.
Yes.
That area is now, is shown. Watch what.
Wait, does that garage exist on the right side?
Oh, so this is the proposed.
That's proposed, Mike.
That's the proposed elevation. That is, right now, that is.
That's what you're proposing to do.
That's our proposal, and right now, the structure's not there. It's just a landing parking area for our vehicles.
And this is basically what we see?
Yes, that's the, the views from the, the side.
These are the existing air conditioning units, existing storage.
Yes, yes.
Now, in fairness, that prior to demolition, the immediately adjacent commercial structures, this was basically mass public area.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that customers or anyone really even knew we had it there. I mean, it was so, so hidden on the side. You know, the, that building coming down is what opens it up and makes it viewable to the public.
Now, I mentioned in the, you heard my introduction. Would you concur with the statements that I made during the course of that introduction?
Yes.
They're accurate. Describe to the Board, first with respect to the parking and the truck issue, what problems, if any, that you've been experiencing, and why you're proposing an enclosed parking area?
Sure. So currently, where we park the trucks, they're exposed to the elements. We have our, one of our primary vehicles, very minimal mileage. We end up putting thousands of dollars a year into it, replacing, we had to replace brake lines, fuel lines. The underside of the chassis is rusting. It's a dump, it has a dump bed. That, all those mechanical parts are rusting as well. Makes it very difficult to maintain and operate because it's exposed to the salt, salt air elements.
And how about with respect to, what is stored to the rear of the parking area?
So, immediately behind where we store our trucks, we, we store various goods, mulch, soils, ice melt, anything palletized that we can, we can store outside. We wrap, you know, in tarps, store it there, extra pallets. We do, we get two trucks a week from True Value and various other deliveries from other vendors, so at any given point, we could have 50 to 100 empty pallets on-site. So this area houses those as well, whatever we cannot fit in our existing.
Are you saying you get two trucks in that area that you're enclosing?
No, not on this side. We get deliveries.
No, but you said you park your trucks.
There will be no, no deliveries on that side of the.
I'm not talking about deliveries, I'm talking about your trucks. You park two of your trucks on that side?
We park, we can only fit one in, in the, the area.
Right.
But we have, we have two vehicles on-site, one usually is.
But only one can fit in this proposed garage?
Yes.
And that's the area right here, the, so the area that's basically 13 feet wide.
Yes.
Okay. Add the one, the block, 13. Now, this area, I indicated that the utilization of this area, if it closed, would not change in any manner whatsoever. Still be parking, still be storage?
Yes, correct.
Not used for display, sales, anything? It's not, would not be open to the general public?
No, not be open. We will have access to this location strictly for storage in and out, and that is, that is all it will be used for.
So there's nothing that would presently impact the parking utilization of your, of your business at all?
No.
Now, the elevation that you are showing, the proposed elevation, that's going to match the pitch, architecture, and facade of the building itself?
Yes, we were going to keep, keep the roof pitched down through the, the proposed, and, you know, provide the symmetry that's shown, shown in the building, building now.
Mr. McLaren mentioned in his report the potential issue of roof runoff. Would you have a comment?
Yes, so with the, with the building going with zero commercial setback and needing gutters and issues with roof runoff, we are going to have a gutter system enclosed within the roof, inside of, inside of the roof line. That way, nothing will protrude over, over our property line. And as far as drainage, we have two flower beds in the front that are above French drains that we created when we, we put the, when we built the building originally. All of our drain runoff runs towards Essex Avenue, and there's a significant grade there, which currently is where all the water runoff goes now, with no, no drainage issues.
Now, as was previously shown in the, the photos that are before the Board, and I'm going to, without going back to the mounted ones, the ones which are labeled as existing side, back angle, and existing front view, and existing back view. You're showing the existing air conditioning units, correct? How many are there?
Yes, there are three.
What are we proposing, or what are you proposing to do with those air conditioning units?
So the air conditioning units, we're going to stay where they are within the setback, but be raised and elevated onto the roof so that they would be, be hidden from, from the view. Platforms would not be, we would be able to remove the platforms.
And any, and so they're going to be, they're going to be raised so they're leveled with the existing roof, top of the roof at that, at that point in the building?
Yes, yes, correct.
And the air conditioning units will be fully screened?
Yes, yes, they will be screened in.
So you won't see them at all?
Correct.
Okay. Mike, if, if the Board grants the relief that we're looking for, when do you propose this, this construction?
We're hoping to begin spring of 2017.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's all we have at this point. Mike, is there anything you want to add to this? Basically, what's your feeling with respect to the, your relationship to the existing, existing and proposed residential uses to the site?
So on the Douglas Avenue side, obviously, they just tore down, and they're going to be building four townhomes very soon. They, throughout this process, as they saw what we were doing, were concerned about what the side of our building looks like, because they're planning on putting million-dollar townhomes right there. Looking at this on a daily basis is not something that residents of Margate are going to, going to want to deal with. So we feel very favorably about how, how this will impact, impact that location. On the Essex Avenue side, as you mentioned, it's a transient motel, the back portion of which houses laundry facilities and their, you know, storage rooms. So there's going to be very little impact on actual residents in this building.
Would you, would you clarify that? Because from what I looked at, it looked like there was four units that were going to have that wall right in front of their doors. Are you saying they're not residential units?
There's, there's units on the top and the bottom.
Yes.
And the back units are, my understanding is that it's laundry and.
And then trash room.
Trash room.
Are they?
Are you talking about the people, or are you talking about?
I'm sorry.
Never. Huh?
Someone owns the building.
Oh.
Oh, I'm asking if they're not used for residential purposes.
So I don't know, I don't, I'm not sure to what depth they come out, but our proposal is set 10 feet back from the existing front of our building. So it's not, you know, it's not coming out to the, the full front of the building as is shown in, in our site plan.
It's coming out to the front of the two-story building?
Yes, but, but not to the.
Not where that shed is?
Correct.
And that, the front of the proposed, closed parking area was consistent with the original footprint of your building's demolition and placement?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
Right here. Did you tell me this?
One of the things that Michael neglected to mention was that area as well as repair vehicles is a constant dumping ground for the residents next door. Every morning, we're taking trash and air conditioners, everything that is dumped off the balcony into the beds of our truck.
Yeah, they essentially treat the bed of our, our pickup truck as a trash dumping zone.
So, Mike, if this area was used for both floors or not, we can't say for certain. We've never been in them, but my understanding was that my folks dump in the balcony, and we're not living units in that area. Well, that makes a big difference. I don't know exactly where these are going to be in, but, but towards the.
I don't know if it was human, but it was, it was walking upright and went in.
There's a trash room and.
Can we allow Jackie to hear what the conversation is?
But to that point, we're arguing that residents aren't here.
He's not here, so apparently.
But if we understand that the decision goes in probably the, not the only issue here, but it is.
I'm sorry, Mike, would you say that again?
If it was existing commercial, then we wouldn't be.
We wouldn't be. Right. But it's not, and it's the, if that's living units, those people would be walking into a tunnel, so it's a big deal if they're not living units.
Mike, we need to know that.
Yes, do need to know that.
It would be dark.
Well, it completely, it's a, basically be a tunnel, there'll be this much space coming through.
If, if one unit was on fire, if one unit was on fire and flames were coming out, you have a wall there, they wouldn't be able to go frontwards or, or backwards out of the rear unit, say. You know, they could be trapped back there.
They will with the Douglas Avenue proposal. There will be, there will be rear egress and, and front egress.
They're probably going to have a six-foot fence in the backyard of that.
I'm not, I'm not certain of how they're.
I thought that was supposed to be egress so that the Douglas Avenue people could get out in the front, so that the Essex Avenue people could get out in the back.
I'm just thinking of the next to the last apartment or something like that at the back.
Keep in mind, zero-foot setbacks is permitted in the zone too, for side yard.
I'm sorry, what, Roger?
Zero-foot setbacks are permitted in the zone for side yards.
Right, but if you want to push back the garage door somewhat as to not block those two units, if people live in there, wouldn't that increase the coverage?
Do you have any play in there?
Wouldn't that increase the coverage of the wall?
Being moving.
I'm just asking the question.
We're asking if that's.
We need a minimum of 20, probably 22 feet.
23.
In order to house a vehicle.
Right, and close the door.
23.
How about width?
There's 20, 28.
Go for the.
There is a little bit of play that would, would, we could set it back. We could bring that front back five feet, still keep the front. And the width at 13 feet in order to fit the commercial vehicles with the, and have doors.
You'd need 13 feet? Is this block wall, that three-foot block wall that goes towards the front of the building, is that yours or their properties?
That are. There is a, how a two-foot gap between that, and they have an iron fence, so it's not like they're.
You have a block wall, and then there's two three feet and a, and a fence?
Right, they have, I believe they have a curb, and then they're, they have iron.
And then they have a walkway in front of the apartment doors to get out.
Yes.
May I add for the record that AJ Carmichael LLC has been notified and did sign and receive their notification of tonight's hearing?
That's the other next door?
Mm-hmm.
I have a couple other questions. This is the first, I've seen this rendering. With a zero-foot setback along the side, how are you collecting the roof runoff?
So, as I explained, because we can't obviously go, go beyond that, we are going to build the gutter system into the roof.
Okay.
So that it will, it will not impact the, the setback.
I got you. And what exactly is going to be stored in that area?
So it's going to be stocked materials, you know, we will have our.
Chemicals?
Uh, no chemicals. It's bagged goods, mulch, soils, things like.
Are there any interior doors into the main building proposed?
Um.
There's one existing, isn't there?
We will, we will give it, grant access, but none of it will affect current retail space. It will be from our storage.
Okay.
Our storage.
Just want that on the record.
Is that new area all going to be heated?
Uh.
Any closed areas?
It, it will have to be maintained because we will have to sprinkler it to comply with, with our existing, so we will have to maintain, it'll, it'll be heated to.
That whole exterior structure is going to be sprinkled?
It's going to have to.
From Douglas to Essex?
Yeah, we'll have to extend our sprinkler lines into that area to, to comply.
I want to, I want to take a five, six-minute break right now. I need to look up something. So if we could stop for five minutes and be right back, okay?
Do you need more peppermint?
A lot of beating horses. Oh, shush. I gave that to you. You know, and I was like, after thinking about four days, I can't. Do you want me to go get water out? There's some, yeah. In our coffee room, which doesn't have a copy, there's a water. Do you need more peppermint?
I'll have a bit of morsel.
Oh, shush. I gave time to you.
I know, and I was like, after thinking about four days, I can't.
Did I get it? It's 45. Do you want me to go cut water out?
Yeah.
There's a, yeah. In our coffee room, which doesn't have a coffee, there's a water.
We're going to ask for feedback to see what they did.
Okay. We're back in session.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
First of all, I have been apprised, been apprised by a reliable source that the score right now is 14 to nothing Eagles.
Oh, thanks, I'm taping it.
The game, uh, the game is not...
Can we take a vote right now? I vote no.
Game is not, um, I know you took in a German to get some further feedback.
No, we took in a German to get information, which we could not get.
You did not get. We'd like to get some feedback from the board as to where, what your concerns are, where you're going, if possible, so we can make some sort of decision as to how we proceed tonight. If that would be...
Our concerns are if the fire inspector would even pass this with that wall there, with those residential units there. I mean, we could make that a condition. It's already a condition in there that all permits, but specifically the fire permits in there. We, we really don't know what the situation is. I thought four units were being blocked in. They say that may not be the case, we don't know.
And of course, there's no point in us getting an approval tonight if the fire commissioner's going to X-nay it and we can't get a permit to build.
Has he been?
He hasn't been at all.
Well, I know, but have you even talked to him?
Which side of Seagrave?
Seagrave was a different use.
What you just, you have to approve of us, we don't have to say.
Yeah, right, it's not a zoning issue. No, I, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm saying is you guys should be, find out for yourselves, talk to them and say, this is what we're proposing, should we go any further or should we modify it?
See, but if it gets approved and then they, then they don't approve it, then you have to modify this plan and come back for an amended site.
That, that's, it might be not approved.
And we still don't know, Roger seems to think it's going to be multifamily. I thought it was going to be commercial, but can't swear to it. And what we were looking for says C map of changes attached, and it's not attached, so we can't get that information.
There are information, and again, it's unconfirmed, is that's going to be commercial, but we can't say that.
Well, we're changing these things, and it is specific, it's been addressed, and there is a map for that area. Where, where Seagrave is, is being changed to multifamily, but I thought that was the only piece of property, so we, we need to...
What is your board, what is the board's consensus, if I may ask, about any flexibility moving the garage back up to a maximum of five feet? Does that have them back one way or the other?
Oh, that helps, but again, we, we're not sure what's being blocked in there, so...
I'd hate to see that if we, if those are really like not people, residents that have that kind of...
I, I can't believe that much room is wasted on the motel.
Who knows what, what's go...
I, I know.
That building was there, I used to be the partner of the prior owner of that building many, many years ago, so...
We're more concerned with, not the five feet back from the front.
The air corridor.
We're more concerned with the side.
Yep.
Zero, zero clearance to the side of the building with units.
So it would help your, it would help the board's decision, one, if we know what the potential future zoning is, and two, what the current usage of those two rear units are.
Four units, up and down, but that's what I mean.
And what about right there? I mean, there isn't going to be none.
They can only get out that way in that way.
Is lo, yeah, well, and I, I understand, it's... Can we get, since I don't think this is going to be that, all that long, if we consent to a German, could you squeeze this in the January agenda? Because once those questions are answered, we'll be just putting you to a vote.
Would that be acceptable?
We have seven cases scheduled.
The only concern we have, once the construction is on Seagrave, the access to Seagrave is structural equal, so either they do have the time for it.
Mm-hmm. When do you think that's starting again?
They've already moved that legislation, they're going to start in...
They're moving forward.
Yes.
Could you do the rear section and hold off on the front garage section?
Apparently not.
For us, the function is in the front section, so without the front section, the front goes away. We're getting a separate place, storage shed in the back section. We're really doing that as a bonus to Seagrave so that we could get our garage. So for us, it's the garage we want. This is to stop the neighbors from complaining about our...
You want the garage as much as the back?
More.
More, more so. And unfortunately, the garage can't be reduced in width, otherwise the functionality of it disappears.
And unfortunately, the garage is what's blocking the access to those units, so...
If we could get...
I don't think anybody has any problem with the 3% or anything else. I think it's what it does there, and we can't consider who lives there, we have to consider anybody lives there.
Correct to your point, with the zero setback, that center block wall we have there now, we could have up to six feet of garage wall, because I don't know whether that, Mr. Chairman.
Where's that picture?
Whether it's, you know, up in the air or not, we can have that at six feet now without any barriers like that.
With all of the issues we have with that neighboring building, prior to us even discussing this with, before Seagrave got approved, although we have talked many times about elevating that to six feet. They disturb our customers, they throw stuff in our lot, they, so...
I think you need to buy us the customers and discuss...
Yeah.
They yell at us and our employees if they're going to...
I know. Well, this is, we're, we're trying to work with you for these reasons.
Yeah.
But actually, we can't, we can't consider those reasons. I mean, it's...
Can we get more information for them on in January? I mean, I'm like, I don't, I don't...
Maybe we'll start half hour earlier.
Yeah. Thank you, Pinky.
I buried myself.
Well, it's, uh, okay, well, let me put it to a vote if we, say aye, if you agree that we can jam it into January. All in favor?
Yes.
We have two in January that are going to be a while.
What?
We have two in January that are going to be a while.
Well, we can do this one first.
Everyone keeps postponing, so that's why we scheduled seven, because we're not sure who's going to actually show up.
Do you get dropouts?
Can I ask a quick question? Does January even solve the building issue?
We have to talk to the owners and tell them, we obviously...
They can't build it. It's going to be landscaping there. That, that, it's going to be six or eight months away before that landscaping goes in.
They're going to be framing, I'm sure, but then...
Well, how close is their framing?
What's the setback?
I don't know.
I believe they have a 10-foot setback, but I'm not...
How wide's your forklift? Their permits aren't ready yet, so there's some time.
I mean, we'd have to, you know, come in and turn sideways with the forklift, so you, we would probably be well over the 10 feet.
Get prefab walls. What are your walls on the exterior of that building? The new building? Are they the metal?
Yes, all steel frame.
All steel frame? Three-hour fire rating?
It's center block.
Now, the new?
It'll be under sprinklers.
The new?
It'll be under sprinklers.
The distance, the foot is going to call you on the distance, up to next to it. They're going to raid you on that wall.
Let's, let's...
I know it's a press.
Can we vote yes or no on whether we'll hear it in January?
Yeah.
Yes.
All in favor? All right. We'll hear you in January if you'd like to postpone.
Thank you. And Mr. Parrison, I understand one of the, one of the touchdowns was a spectacular interception.
That's true.
Thank you.
New business is a yes or no vote that all plans must have elevations or it's not, or they, we will not consider it.
Yes.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? On motion passes, Roger?
Rich, not, not only the elevations, I think they should follow the entire checklist. I haven't seen one submission yet that I would consider complete. How about by our own standards?
What in particular, what's, what, what? They are submitting checklists now. Okay. Going forward, they have been submitting checklists. And in defense of Chris Baillen, he did submit elevations and...
But these guys didn't.
No.
Right, I'm just saying, everybody should. There was two tonight that didn't, so...
Surveys are often missing.
Well, surveys are required, had always been required, haven't they?
Right, yeah, there was a survey.
I'm just adding the, adding the elevations to it, because it helps us.
Is there any name modification to do with?
Yes. Details on the adjacent buildings, buildings adjacent to the site, both sides, and vertical dimensions. And elevations with the vertical dimensions.
Well, that would require us to survey their buildings to basically building elevations, I would think, would not...
No, vertical elevation is with your building.
Vertical elevation of our building.
Yeah.
But the proximity of the adjacent buildings, I mean, even when I built my house, they had proximity of the adjacent buildings on there in the survey.
As a plot plan, right? As a plot plan of each...
We'll provide all we can within, within reason.
Okay.
Rich, since we're carrying this to next month, they don't need any notice, we can just announce it now, is that right?
Yep.
For all those in the audience.
Okay.
Yeah, for the record, it's carried. What's the date in January, John? January 26, 6:30, 6:30 PM.
And it may be in order, in the Old City Hall.
Really?
It's supposed to be completed.
Okay, so wherever the zoning board meeting, wherever the planning board meeting is, if it's Old City Hall, it'll be there. If it's not completed, it'll be here, so everybody knows that.
Thank you.
Okay, just make sure that's in the, the, the attorneys know or what's his name knows.
Are you adjourned?
I, I thought we should schedule two meetings in line, just cancel as we allow. Say that again. Schedule two meetings in line, just cancel as we allow.
I got court tomorrow. Call that one portrait.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Would somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
No.
All opposed?
Yes.